I will now call the December 19th, 2016 Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and I will lead you into pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV7, to tonight's City Council meeting. Next we have a consent agenda of the items that need to be pulled. If not, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Kowal.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next we have a public hearing on the amended PRO concept plan for Eagles Ridge Estates.
That's, um...
Are we going to continue that?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
We're going to continue until January 17th.
So moved, Your Honor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye. Aye. Same sign. Motion carries. We're going to have an introduction and a reading of a bill 4463, but before that, we have an updated report we need to get from Evan Fitz and Tom Calico. Tom Calico, who receives some great training here in the city of Blue Springs as an Assistant City Administrator. Because we are throwing it in if you do good.
Well, I hate to step in front of that introduction.
And then there's Evan. All right.
Evan Fitz with the Pulsonelli Law Firm here tonight on behalf of Development Associates LLC, the developer of the White Oak Redevelopment Project. As you all know from the agenda this evening, we have a very important step in this process that is occurring with the foundation being laid for the issuance of the bonds in support of the project. But I'd like to just step back just for a brief minute and remember that this is the culmination of years of efforts to develop this critical piece of the city's, or redevelop this critical piece of the city's commercial infrastructure. We are very excited. Our entire client development team is very excited about this and thinks it will be a great success for the city. I drove by the site. I hadn't been by there in a month or so. I drove by it this evening. It looks great. It's well on its way. I hope that you all take that as a very good thing heading into the spring when heavy construction activity will start, leading up to, I've been told that the opening on the grocery store will be approximately July 1st, so coming this summer. A couple of commercial tenants going in as well. There are signed leases for Johnny's Tavern, as well as a Pacific Dental Office. And then approximately another 10,000 square feet of retail coming as soon as we can identify the tenants necessary for that, but hopefully very soon. So again, we look very much forward to all of that. We appreciate this council's continued support of this important project. It's been a great process personally for me to work with you all and your professional staff, and I compliment you on that. It's been a good process, start to finish. So thank you very much, and we look forward to keeping this going.
Were there any questions or comments to Evan? Because I'm certain we've all received very positive comments about the activity that's going on there. Now, I'm still trying to recover from trying to climb up on that equipment, you know, when we tore the old facility down, so, but anyway, it's a welcome addition, and we're looking forward to seeing walls go up.
Yep, as are we. Thank you.
You bet.
Your Honor?
Yo.
Yeah, on, uh, so in front of us here in the next line item is the bonds. And those, there is a CID sales tax component in that. Is that correct?
Yes.
For how much?
It's a 1% additional sales tax.
Okay. Um, and so this bond, these bonds are going to be based on, are, is the CID sales tax in place?
The, so the CID Act requires a vote of all of the registered voters within the district, which is just the property owner. Obviously, no one lives there. That vote occurred in September of this year, and then the county, or excuse me, the CID approved the vote in September of this year. The county election office, after a statutory notice period, held the election in November. We've notified the Missouri Department of Revenue that the effective date of the sales tax is to be April 1st of 2017. So the sales tax will be in place prior to any commercial activity occurring on the property.
Okay. And the duration of that?
The duration is 23 years from the commencement.
23 years. Okay. All right. Those questions ahead.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you. Evan?
Thank you very much.
Tom, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for that warm welcome. I appreciate it. This room's a whole lot different than it was back during my tenure.
Oh, no question about that.
Congratulations on your new building. It's my first time in it. It's fantastic.
Well, thank you.
Before I get too deep into it, I do want to acknowledge the presence of a couple of other pivotal players in this bond issue. We've got Phil Richter over here from UMB, and Sid Douglas, I think you know, from Gilmore and Bell. It really does take a village to do a bond issue. We had a large team. Not everyone's represented here. We had a lot of great people working on it, and it went very well, very smoothly. My firm, Springsland Incorporated, served as the municipal advisor for the city on this, on this bond issue, so it falls to me this evening to give you the rundown, a little, a quick summary of the bond issue. And I say a quick summary, and I had a email exchange with Christine on Friday. I said, well, typically these summaries, and I think you all got a copy of this, run about two pages. This one runs, I think, four or so. And that's because, understanding the security of this bond issue, you really have to understand the deal. This is a little bit different than a general obligation bond, or a certificate of participation, a little more complicated. And so I asked Christine whether it was worth going through, you know, some of the detail with you, and she said that it was, so you'll forgive me if I go just a little bit longer than I typically do in the summary of a bond sale.
We'll blame Christine.
Okay.
Longer than you should.
Uh, so what you have before you this evening is an ordinance which authorizes the sale of $9,265,000 of special obligation revenue bonds. This ordinance, as I said, authorizes both the sale and it authorizes the execution of a number of different documents that will be required in order to execute the bond issue, and I'm going to leave it to Sid if you have questions about some of the other legal documents. So the issue purpose, as we all know, is for the White Oak Shopping Center. Back in November of 2014, the council authorized tax increment financing for the redevelopment of the White Oak Shopping Center. That, that White Oak Shopping Center TIF plan authorized a number of things: acquisition of the site, demolition of the existing improvements, construction of a grocery store, and about 20,000 square feet of additional retail improvements, as well as the construction of a, what's estimated to be 180-unit senior housing complex. Now, the redevelopment is planned in two phases. We call them redevelopment projects. Redevelopment Project B is the topic of tonight. That is the retail portion. Redevelopment Project A is the senior living. That is not impacted at all by this bond issue. That will be a separate, a separate financing, which I'll touch on here in just a little bit. So also, back in November of 2014, the city entered into a tax increment financing contract with the developer. Under that contract, the developer is eligible to be reimbursed for a portion of its expenses associated with the project. Specifically, the, from the TIF revenue, the tax increment financing revenue, the developer is eligible to receive about $6.9, almost $7 million of reimbursement. That does not include financing costs and interest. So this is kind of like when you buy your house, right? You're paid $200,000 for the house, but when they, when you sit down with your financing people, they explain to you why you're going to pay twice as much by the time you pay off your mortgage, right? So it's the same type of thing. The principal amount here is, from the TIF, is about $7 million, and then you have to add on to that financing costs and interest. As was alluded to earlier, there is also a community improvement district component of this financing, a additional 1% CID sales tax. From that revenue stream, the developer is eligible to receive about $1.9 million in financing, again, plus financing costs and interest. So for the, and one of, one of the specific things that was called out in the tax increment financing contract was that the developer is eligible to be reimbursed either on a pay-as-you-go basis or through bonds for the retail portion. And ultimately, what was chosen was to be reimbursed through bonds. For the senior living portion, the contract anticipates that it will be done on a pay-as-you-go So let's get to the actual security for the bonds, and this is the important point, I think, for all of you, and that is that these are what are called special limited obligation bonds. What that means is that these bonds are payable solely from the project revenues. They do not represent a general obligation of the city. The city actually does not have a financial responsibility to these bonds, other than to make available the specific project revenues. So those project revenues are these: the incremental increase in property taxes, the incremental increase in sales taxes, these are from all the taxing entities, the remaining one-half of the city's general sales tax, so just the city general, the remaining one-half of the city general sales tax, which is not captured by tax increment financing. Because you remember, so we're capturing the first half with tax increment financing, the second half flows to the taxing entities. We're going to make an exception here for the city's general sales tax. That remaining half will be considered project revenues and go towards payment of the bonds. And then, of course, the one-half of the 1% capital, excuse me, community improvement district sales tax, that again is not captured by the TIF. There are some exceptions to this. There are certain taxes that are not eligible for capture, and then specifically, the state of Missouri taxes are not eligible for capture, and there is some portion of the Central Jackson County Fire Protection District and the Blue Springs R4 School District taxes that are going to be exempt, a portion of them. So what happens is you remember in TIF, so all of the, all the taxes that were being paid from the site prior to the creation of TIF in 2014, those taxes continue to flow to the taxing entity. We know, of course, there's not much there, right, because the value was fairly low, and there weren't really any sales taxes of any great amount being produced. But those taxes, those base taxes before 2014, 2014, they continue to flow to all the taxing entities. Now, we have a unique situation in this particular TIF, and then we have a store that's moving within the city, but from outside of the district into the district, and that's the price shopper grocery store. So there's special rules for that. And what's going to happen in that case is the sales, the base sales taxes for the price shopper store will basically be their, their sales from this year. It's the sales in the year prior to their move, so it'll be the sales for this year will constitute those base sales that continue to flow to the taxing entities, not actually the base before 2014, as I mentioned a moment ago. We, we hit a fairly good time to price these bonds. I say fairly good in that rates have been really, really low, near or at historic lows for most of 2016. We did see a spike in rates here just in the last few weeks. That's due in part to, we've had quite a bit of flow into the market, a lot of supply of municipal bonds into the market, and that has somewhat increased rates. And then we had the post-election adjustment. There's a lot of folks who are, who are betting that the new, the new president, the new Congress are going to do things that will heat up the, the economy, and so inflation expectations have risen a bit, so we've seen rates rise a little bit. That being said, and I think Phil can attest to this, we are still sitting at rates that are way below historical averages, so it's still a very good time to issue these bonds. So, sale results. These bonds were sold through a private placement with, with UMB. That was also an element of the tax increment financing contract. And then what that means is that UMB was hired as a placement agent. They then solicited, in this case, they solicited a number of banks to purchase these bonds, and they were able to achieve a true interest cost of 5.03%. Now, if we adjust it a little bit to account for the placement agent fee, it comes out to 5.15%. As part of our responsibility to you, as our client, when we were negotiating on the rates, our firm did considerable research into comparable sales in the marketplace. Here in the recent past, we were able to identify a number of nice local Missouri comparable sales, and we felt confident in telling you that these results are quite in line, and actually, I think, a little bit better than some of the comparable sales that we studied. The bonds do have a call feature, a portion of the, well, the bonds are callable beginning May 1, 2027. Now, we do have a portion of the bonds that have a, what's called a super sinker feature, or a special mandatory redemption. What that means is if we have, if after paying debt service and taking care of all other responsibilities associated with the bonds, if we have excess funds, there is a portion of the bonds that we can, that we will pay off early. Now, as part of the entire bond process, we had a third party prepare a revenue study. If the revenues come in, as this third party projected, with that early redemption feature, we are projecting that the bonds will be paid off in 16 and a half years. Now, the maximum they can go out, the bonds actually mature in 2040, so that's the longest they could go out, but, but the projection, as I said, shows that they could be repaid as early as 16 and a half years. So the bonds produce net proceeds to the developer, so proceeds to pay off, to reimburse the developer for their eligible expenses, about $7.5 million. So that leaves of their maximum amount that they could be reimbursed about $1.35 million plus interest. So this amount, at, based on the current agreement with the developer, this amount will be paid on a pay-as-you-go basis, both from, there's a little bit, as Evan referred to, there's a little bit more retail to be done in the retail portion that is not included in this bond issue, so some of, so the revenue that comes off of that will go towards the pay-as-you-go, and then, once the senior living redevelopment project areas develop, then revenue from that will also contribute to the pay-as-you-go financing. The exact amount that they'll be eligible for reimbursement, of course, is not necessarily that $1.35 million, it's whatever they end up certifying. Can't be more, but it could be less. I know you're accustomed to with bond issues, seeing a credit rating. We did not apply for a credit rating associated with this bond issue. It just, it's a combination of two things. One is just the nature of the bond issuance. This is sort of a unique and bond issue, and has elements of risk that don't lend itself necessarily to a credit rating. And then also, the, the manner of sale, which really was part of, pardon, parcel of that risk profile, using the private placement technique, again, kind of allowed us to move without, without a, without a credit rating. So with that, I want to, as again, acknowledge the efforts of the entire team that worked on this bond issue, and be happy to stand for any questions.
Are there any questions? So, Tom, all the retail within this project are subject to the CID?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I just, I, would you like clarification? You talked about the taxes concerning CJC Fire and the Blue Springs School District, and you said a portion. How is that portioned out?
So you've got two factors here. Under Missouri statute, fire protection districts like CJC may choose to have their increment exempted. In this particular case, help me guys, it's 50%, right? Fifty, in this case, they requested that 50% of their increment, and they have both a property tax and a sales tax, so both the property tax and sales tax increment is what we're talking about. They requested that 50% be exempted, and so it is.
All right. And the school district?
The school district, and this was part of a negotiated, as far as I know, a negotiated agreement, they are to receive 10% of what they would normally have received based on their property tax rate. And this is to reimburse them for certain capital costs associated with, with the project.
Receive 10% of the increase?
10% of the increment, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Tom. Did anyone, from Gilmore Bell or from UMB, have anything to add to it, or are you satisfied with what's been presented?
I'm Phil Richter with UMB, and I couldn't be more satisfied with what Tom just said. Who can argue with that, right? I just wanted to thank you all for giving UMB the opportunity to work on this. It's, it's always important for us to work in communities where we have a presence, and we've been doing municipal bond underwriting for years, and recently, more recently, we've been doing special projects like this where it, where it's a TIF financing or a special obligation financing. We have developed several different banks that are interested in buying these types of financings. We think it makes sense from the city standpoint to do these on a private placement basis. You're working with institutional investors who understand the financing and, and can work with you if, for whatever reason, things don't work out exactly the way you anticipate, as opposed to selling it publicly to individuals. So we, we personally think it makes a lot of sense to approach it this way. In this case, we had three banks that, that are participating in buying the entire issue, and they've been recent, they have been frequent buyers for us. So bottom line is, we're delighted to work on this. We think we got you a very good rate for this, for this particular project. We're excited about seeing a new price shopper go up there. We do a lot of business with the Constantino family and with their, their interests, so we're, again, thank you very much, and we're delighted to have had this opportunity.
Okay, Phil, thank you. Sid is no stranger to this body, but he's just going to wave at us and pass, right?
Unless you have questions, nobody wants to hear from attorneys anyway, so.
Okay. That concludes the presentation, so we would have an introduction and regina bill 4463.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of bill number 4463, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation revenue bonds, White Oak Marketplace Project, Series 2016, of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the bonds.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4463, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of special obligation revenue bonds, White Oak Marketplace Project, Series 2016, of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the bonds.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kowal?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4636.
Next we have introduction and regina bill 4464.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4464, an ordinance amending chapters 100, 245, 340, 360, I'm sorry, that's 380, I don't have my glasses on, 380, 406, 500, and 515 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, relating to penalties that may be imposed in various violations.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4464, an ordinance amending chapters 100, 245, 340, 380, 3, 406, 500, and 515 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, relating to penalties that may be imposed in various violations.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kowal?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number 4637.
Next we have introduction and regina bill 4465.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor. First reading of bill number 4465, an ordinance amending chapters 220 and 225 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, to bring such chapters into compliance with state law.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
For a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Same sign.
Second reading of bill number 4465, an ordinance amending chapters 220 and 225 of the Code of Ordinances, city of Blue Springs, Missouri, to bring such chapters into compliance with state law.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Kowal?
Aye.
Councilman Levisay?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Mayor Ross?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance 4638.
Next we have a presentation on crime mapping. So is that something that... Ah, Ms. Jennifer's going to do it, huh?
Yes.
And you got backup with Kim and the chief?
Yes, I did.
All right.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Deckerhausen, and I'm analyst with the Blue Springs Police Department. For those of you who do not know me...
He's waving at me. Does that sound better?
Yes.
Everybody could probably hear me regardless of whether that's on or not, so...
I didn't want to say that, but yes.
I wanted to let you know that about a year ago, the Blue Springs Police Department partnered with LexisNexis Community Crime Mapping to bring crime mapping itself to the public and the citizens of Blue Springs. With that said, we're going to go ahead and just start in with the driving of it. We have it listed out on the site, the Blue Springs site. Can I move this up, Kim? Because that's unloved-handed. I have to do it this way. Okay. It will be live as of this coming Thursday. When you go out to the city site, you'll be on the Blue Springs Police Department main page, and you'll go to crime mapping, which will bring you up to here. You can click anywhere in this circle, and it's going to bring you directly into the Blue Springs page itself. Once you're with inside the page, there are tutorials to take you through the different processes, but I'm going to give you a quick demo of how you can access it and move around freely. It is a free website. Everybody can get on to it. You'll be able to just go into LexisNexis Community Crime Mapping. You can put in different date ranges. I do have mine pre-programmed in. I want the last month worth of data to continuously roll forward, so that's what we're going to stick with here. We have events, which include different crime types, as well as different other events that go on, such as traffic incidents, disorder, codes violo, oh, sorry, drug violations, and different things like that. You can choose on them. I do have chosen in here, pre-planned, the Part 1 crimes. That's what's being pulled up within the map itself. There are different categories. We also are getting a daily feed from the Missouri State Highway Patrol, which will link in every day a rolling of our sex offenders from the Missouri State Highway Patrol into the city, and they're going to be all the different people that you should see here. If you roll over the top of one of those icons, it's going to give you the name of the person, and the offender, and the age, and so forth. We'll click back that back off so it doesn't look so jumbled. As you look over across the city, you'll see that there are different little icons, and when you move down, it will give you such things as the crime type itself, the report, the location by the 100th block, so to help with the privacy of the victims and anybody that is having an issue at their address and/or business. It'll give you the date and the time that they happened. You do have different views. We do have a satellite view, so that you can see the rooftops. You can zoom in and out to the different areas. We'll see a commercial burglary and so forth. I like the map view. It looks a little less cluttered. So what we'll do is we'll roll out so that you guys can kind of see we're adjoining to Independence, who is also on the Community Crime Mapping, as well as a plethora of jurisdictions nation. You are eligible to be able to view all of theirs at the touch of a button, as well as ours. This is Lee Summit down here in Independence. Since we do have that data in our system, we're gonna pull down and see the agencies. I'm trying to get, there we go. There we go. You'll see that Independence and Lee Summit and Blue Springs are on here. We do have two capabilities, if you would like to see it. We do have our patrol districts out on the map in color code. You roll over it, and you'll see that it will come up and say which district that is. That's District One. We have asked them to go ahead and load in our council districts for ease of visibility through that also. You do have the opportunity, like I've got one month of part one crime data on here, and we all like the weather maps that we see. Well, we also have the capability of density maps for the most crimes that are occurring in the areas. You simply roll up to where the analytical layer is, and you click on density, and what it's going to do is it's going to populate and show you a density map based off of all of the crimes that you see mapped on here in a clustered form. So you would see like an area hotspot for all this stuff in red and down around this area and so forth. We'll check that back off. It does also have the capability, when you're seeing the map, what you see on the map here in this view, at a click of a button, you jump over to what is called the data grid. Everything that you just saw on that map has now been transformed into an Excel-type spreadsheet with the icons and so forth. You can sort by the different, either by the cases. You'll see that this one here is Independence because it's got a bigger number in there, but that's because it got pulled in, and it will say that it's the Independence Agency being pulled into that. At the same time, you can do different types of analytics. So let's say you have all of that mapped into there, and you're like, hmm, I wanna know what's going on. The most crimes, but out of that whole piece of pie on the mapping, you've got 16 thefts in that timeframe, your residential burglaries and so forth, all mapped out on a pie chart. These can all each be enlarged, as well as shrunk down. You can also see your crime types by first day of them occurring. It looks like in that timeframe, on what we had on that map, your most occurrences are gonna be 10 on a Monday, and those are broke down to your thefts, your motor vehicle thefts, and your burglary residentials. Can you also write that down by your district? We are going to talk to LexisNexis and see if we can get the polygons on the in-house side of it. We can do that. We can select just a district, and it will only pull what that is. I'm gonna try to contact them tomorrow and see if we can get that added over to the other side, too. And at the same time, different like hotspots, times, like Mondays, and everything that you saw, the most occurrences are usually Mondays from like 10 to 11 o'clock. That's why it's red in that area. And then your hopeful days. It does also tell you what agencies are being pulled into that map at that point in time. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, Jennifer, from anyone?
I guess we know what time, what day of the week we should stay home.
Mr. Johnson?
Councilman Carter wants to see it after a chief's game.
Of course.
So, Your Honor, I just wanna make a quick comment here. This stuff appears to be magical. It just shows up, but there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes to bring this to fruition and to Chief McCoy. Captain Edwards, see you there. I know you've had, been a part of this, Jennifer and Kim getting it loaded to the website. We're excited to have this tool. Want to remind people that overall, crime is down in Blue Springs. Just because you're seeing it now live on a map may give you a different sense, or you may have, some people may have a reaction or perception to now seeing it out there live and having it on their mobile phones, however they choose to use it, but we're excited. And we're gonna be able to use this to project and do forecasting. You gather data, and it helps you evaluate where you think the next major event might be occurring. So we're happy to be rolling this out, and I just wanna say thank you to everybody who had a role in getting us to this point.
Certainly, I think the council would share those same comments, compliments with you of the work that's gone into this. Kim, I think, if my memory serves me right, and it's dangerous, that we do highlight that in our next edition of the magazine that's gonna be coming out to your mailbox very soon.
Absolutely. It's gonna be in the next magazine, which should be in homes right after Christmas, right before the New Year, and on Thursday, you'll be able to, it'll be an update to the Blue Springs mobile app, so you'll be able to access this map via our mobile app.
Very good. Again, we appreciate all of your efforts.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Can we see that link from the main page one more time, just so we can...
Ms. Jennifer will take care of that for you.
This is the, this is actually the...where is it?
Probably, yeah.
Can I go back?
Oh.
Okay. This is the police department's main page. You're gonna go down on the left-hand side, right to where it says Crime Mapping. It's got its whole page all to itself. From here, you'll see you'll go straight into it, and we've also got some short-term definitions for the icons that you're gonna be pulling up. And when you click over the top of that, it's gonna bring you straight into Blue Springs.
Okay.
We have the link straight up.
Another question here. Could you kind of generalize the type of issues that you may see on here? I mean, I see burglary and things like that, but it probably doesn't get into traffic tickets and things like that, does it?
We do have the capability. I'm gonna go ahead and just show you. We can see traffic incidents, anything where there was a report taken by the police, it will be on there. I'm gonna just deselect everything to undo the clutter.
Spots where there's a lot of speeding going on?
And remind, just remember, this is for the last month. So what you'll see is, you'll see all the, everything that's a traffic is a U-turn type, and what this is was a traffic incident. It was a, looks like non-entry motor vehicle accident. And another one, parking complaint, motor vehicle accident. These are where reports were taken, like careless driving. So does that help?
Yeah, very nice. I appreciate seeing that. And you say we're partnering with LexisNexis. That sounds more like a combination of a car company and shampoo.
It does, doesn't it?
All alive.
We're gonna be fast and shiny.
Yeah. Very nice. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Good question. Anyone else? If not, again, thank you for this presentation. It was very informative, and we look forward to having it.
Just to let everybody know, my number is gonna be on that page, so if you guys have any questions later on, feel free to give me a call.
Okay. Gotcha.
Here, one more thing.
One more thing. Be quick. Just as a reminder, within the last six months, the council has, you've seen a couple of presentations on things, new tools that we've added to our webpage. The first one being the OpenGov, which provides our budget and our accounting information, and now the Crime Mapping. So very proud of that, and I understand there are some councilmen who wanted to have some specialized training on the OpenGov, so we will be working on that for first quarter of 2017.
Anyone else? Seeing none. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from the Park Commission. We're gonna turn it over to Dennis. You have three of your commissioners present, and if you would introduce them to everybody, and we'll let you get on with the presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this evening. As Mayor said, we do have three of our park commissioners here this evening: Maureen Johnson, Keith Hanneman, and Brandon Jackley. And tonight, myself and Brandon, and Brandon is our chair of our park commission, will be presenting a recommendation to funding the parks department's deferred maintenance needs. As you can see, I gotta find it right. I'm sorry. Moving a little bit ahead of myself here. So as you will see through our presentation, the parks commission staff worked together to begin meeting the needs as outlined in the recently adopted Parks Recreation and Open Space Master Plan. We have many needs. Not all of them will be met through this proposal. However, the proposal utilizes many tools in developing this recommendation. And right now, what I'll do is I'm gonna turn this over to Brandon, and he's gonna take you through the process that our park commission there took to develop the proposal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Dennis. First of all, I just wanna say thank you to Dennis Dobell and his staff as the park director, just the remarkable work that they do. Justin Stewart, Steve Wayman, Randy Cooper, being at these meetings, just getting to know them over the last couple of years has been an honor, and I just wanna publicly just thank them for just the incredible work they do. So Keith Hanneman, Deanna, Jack Gilliland, and Maureen Johnson, thank you all as well for serving on this subcommittee to put this presentation together tonight. So what you're gonna see is an opportunity that you allowed us to have as a park commission to put together a presentation, to share with you our desire as a city on the move to bring a quarticent sales tax to the voters in April. We believe that at this time, it's one of the most important times in our city's history to do this. A lot of our parks were built 20, 30, 40 years ago, and really just haven't had a lot of attention since they were built. And so Steve, in his spare time, I'm not sure where he found it, but took about 700 pictures throughout our parks, and we had an opportunity as a park commission to look at those and also visit parks and see some of the things that our citizens see. And quite frankly, we were, we just feel really excited about being able to give our citizens a competitive edge within our park system. And so as you read through some of these slides, I won't read through all of them, but that's kind of where we've been. We've met probably a half a dozen times in the last month to prepare for this evening, the subcommittee. Thank you to the parks folks for donuts and bagels every morning. And so we've had a good time, and feel like we have a really good presentation for you. So like I said, we just feel like this is a historical event for us as a park commission to just move our city forward and give our citizens what they deserve. And as we've looked at other cities, Lee Summit in particular, and Columbia, we use those two cities as kind of a way to look at what they have done over the last 20 years and what they're doing. And just, they were able to provide for us a foundation and a, just kind of an outlook of something that's realistic, and so, and they've had great success in what they've done. We looked at Columbia's website, for instance, and they had everything listed, the projects they've done over the years, and what their sales tax is, and what their sunset is, and we dove into Lee Summit just a little bit, but we just really feel like we can be a competitive city as well. We feel like there's some great opportunities for homeowners to see their properties improve. We also feel like there's some improvements we can make that can generate some pretty significant revenue. The softball department, the softball department that Justin coordinates has increased, I don't have the exact percentage, but it's, a lot of cities are shutting down their softball programs. Ours is growing at a significant rate, and that's generating great revenue. And we feel like one of the first parks, we could even attempt to use some of this taxes on Young Park to, the lights that are there, for instance, the lights that are there, there's one pole in particular, you can stick your hand all the way through, because those wooden poles are original, and they've just twisted in time as well, and so the lights don't even really shine where they're supposed to, and one of the ballparks there doesn't even have lights. So we're losing on opportunity there to generate revenue, and we feel like the softball and the rentals that could happen there, if we had new lights and, you know, some updated things there, we could really generate quite a bit of revenue. So even in the first sunset that we're gonna put before you, we feel like we could not only make a better opportunity for our residents on all areas of our city, but we also feel like we can generate quite a bit of revenue, just like the Field House has. Hopefully, you've seen the results from that, which have been astonishing. To be honest with you, it's been remarkable. So and then finally, for my part, you know, you can see on here, we just are excited about, like I've been saying, just to meet the community standards. And, you know, we looked at one in particular park, I believe it was Woods Chapel Park, and just feel like it's a park that really needs to be closed. I think part of it has already been closed. There's the pole that I was talking about earlier. But there's quite a few of our parks where we're already beginning to, we've closed tennis courts at Blue Springs Park, and it's just, I, as my company, we use that park every summer for our company party, and, you know, it's had beautiful new children's park, but just to see the tennis, we've just had to close it. So just a lot of amazing opportunities, and so at this point, I'll turn back over to Dennis Dobell, and I just wanna say thank you for your time.
Are there any questions of Brandon before he sits down?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So as we kind of go through the presentation here, I want to talk just a little bit about why this is important. So we talk about community investment and how this invests in our community, and certainly, parks play an important role in the health of our community. They promote physical activity and natural surroundings. And there was a study done in Nebraska that for every dollar spent on trails, it provided $3 of direct savings on medical benefits for those residents there. Parks are also important for community development. They're one of the quickest and most effective ways to build a sense of community and improved quality of life. Parks also provides a place for people to connect and interact in a shared environment while getting diverse people into, to work together towards a shared vision. And certainly, economic activity is no, nothing light to take when it comes to what parks is able to do. We attract visitors into the community all the time, but not only that, it provides that positive economic benefit by enhancing property values. It increases municipal revenues. It brings in home buyers and workers and attracts retirees. And certainly, as our country continues to see that influx of retirees every day, that's an important thing to think about. How do we attract some of those to become residents here in Blue Springs? And lastly, it's in environmental sustainability. Green infrastructure is a community's natural life support system. It's ecological framework needed for the environment and economic sustainability. But in order for these investments to pay dividends, they must be maintained, and they must attract, be attractive to our residents and to those that potentially would come and use our facilities. So overall, what is the recommendation that our park commission is putting before you this evening? They are recommending a quarticent sales tax that sunsets in five years. It's addressing our aging infrastructure and funding, over that five-year period, about $7.5 million in deferred maintenance needs. As it's lined out here, Bursel, No Park would see about $1.75 million in improvements. Wilbury Young Park would see about $2 million, two and two quarters million dollars. And then other park improvements throughout our city would be funded at about $2.6 million. Trails would be funded at $500,000, as well as the Adams Point Golf Course at $300,000, and Vesper Hall, again, at $75,000. Certainly, that is a drop in the bucket. That represents about 20% of our current deferred maintenance needs, as we said today. They are recommending that this be placed on the April 4, 2017 ballot, and that certainly there'll be oversight of that through our park commission, making sure that we meet the outlined agenda that we have before you this evening. So why a sales tax and not a property tax? That's always been the question. Why not consider a property tax, or why not consider some other funding mechanism? Certainly, property tax is a viable option, but it is one that you have to look at, that our residents are the only ones that pay for those improvements. And certainly, the benefits far outweigh just our residents. We attract visitors from outside the community that use our park system, and certainly, they would gain the benefit of our residents paying for those. And certainly, a sales tax is another opportunity that we have to look at. As we look at this, like I was saying, property tax, residents carry 100% of the burden to fund the improvements while visitors get the benefit. There's also a higher cost to our residents compared to what that is of a sales tax. Communities use sales tax to fund their parks as it is an economic attraction. Thus, visitors coming into the community assist in paying for these improvements, and all of our residents receive the benefits of improved parks at a lower cost to them. Studies have shown that as much as 60% of the revenue can be generated from visitor support from within our city, and that's not by our residents. So what is that actual cost to the residents? To generate a million and a half dollars annually, a quarticent sales tax would generate that $1.5 million. That cost for our fans... That cost for our family that spends $1,000 a month is $2.50, or annually, about $30. If we were to look at a property tax increase to raise those kinds of funds, we'd be looking at about a 15-cent tax milletty that would raise only about $1.2 million, so about $300,000 less than the quarter cent that we're talking about. And that would actually cost our residents about $72, based on a home that's valued at $250,000. So it's double what it would cost our residents to do a property tax, and it's actually less revenue coming in to fund our needed repairs. So the sales tax will cost residents less than half the cost of the property tax increase. So if you remember back a few years, when we talked about a sales tax here a few years back, we had this same kind of slide talking about the top 30 communities by population. And as it was then, there were four communities that didn't have a sales tax. As we sit today, of the top 30, there's only three now that do not have a park sales tax funding their park system. And certainly, you can see that Blue Springs is number 11 in this scenario here. So those communities today that don't have a sales tax are St. Joe, Blue Springs, and Wildwood. St. Joe does have a dedicated property tax of about 20 cents for assessed valuation. Blue Springs and Wildwood still remain the only two communities of the top 30 without a dedicated funding source for their park system. And again, Wildwood was incorporated in 1995, and looking at some of their strategic plans in 2007, they started talking about developing a park sales tax to fund their park system. Today, they haven't put that before the voters, but they are still talking about doing something like that. Again, looking at those, at the top 100 cities in the state of Missouri, when we think back just a few years ago, 75 out of 100, today it's 77 out of 100 have currently used a sales tax to ensure the vitality of their park system for their community. While three additional communities no longer have funding in place, they have used the park sales tax to fund their parks. That equates to about 80% of the top 100 communities that have used the sales tax method to fund their park system. Blue Springs today is at a disadvantage to being able to provide vibrant parks and services to our community due to lack of funding available. And so as we developed this, one of the things that we, certainly the committee looked at was some of the survey results that we had through our master plan. During the development of the proposal before you, the Park Commission and staff used the community survey to conduct, that was conducted during our master plan process, as well as the last citizen survey to prioritize these recommendations. The importance of the current facilities residents said was to basically take care of our city parks as they sit today, get those repaired, take care of our trails, take care of aquatics, courts, and athletic fields. Those were indicated as the top five and the most important. As you talk about facilities to add, expand, they were allowed just to choose, and out of that, when they just were able to choose their top priorities, trails were number one, splash pads, and aquatics. As you will see throughout this presentation, these priorities line up with our proposal this evening. And lastly, when they were asked about picking their top three, trails was number one, improved parks number two, and a new aquatics facilities were the top three. So you can kind of see there's that same theme about improving our trails and improving our park system, as well as trying to address our aquatics needs. So the specifics of the funding proposal, this would again fund about 20% of the total parks deferred maintenance over the next five years. The impact to the parks is significant. Burris Old Mill would see about $1.75 million, Young Park, $2.25, and again, I've already shared these with you, so I'm going to go ahead and move on past that. So specifically, what we've done is we went through and said, how would we spend this money? And so this would be how the $1.75 million at Burris Old Mill Park would be spent. So we'd remove the tennis court and construct a splash pad. Some people would say, how is that deferred maintenance? Our tennis court at that facility is unusable at this point in time. Surface is past its life expectancy and really needs to be replaced. So while we'd remove that amenity, we'd still be putting an amenity back in there and meeting some of the needs that we saw through the surveys of our master plan process, which is add a splash pad or add some kind of an aquatics feature. Playground replacement, parking lots, restroom buildings, basketball courts, and baseball fields. I think one of the things that we looked at as we went through the funding of all of these things, for certainly, we have a lot of needs in blacktop and asphalt, but certainly our residents need to have more than just blacktop and asphalt. So we were trying to figure out how to blend the two needs to give them some nice amenities that they can use, but also meeting a lot of some of the non-sexy things that we have in our park system. And I'm sorry, I just noticed that this is saying a half cent, this is a quarter cent, so there's a typo in this. Wilbur Young Park is 2.25 million, and again, it's a lot of parking lots, replacing those softball field lights that Brandon was talking about, where the poles are twisted and they're cracking to the point where you can put your hand inside of them. Tennis court renovations, restroom facility at our shelter house, and basketball courts. The restroom facility is currently at our shelter, which is one of the most popular used shelters, is a porta potty. I think we all kind of know what the use of those is really like for the effectiveness of having nice facilities for our residents. Other park improvements, these are going to be improvements throughout our community. Ward Park Playground, the Blue Springs Park tennis courts, Wood Chapel Basketball Courts, Pink Hill Shelters, Rotary Park gazebo, Hidden Valley, Keystone, Baumgartner, and then there's also about four parking lots specifically that would be funded as well in this proposal. Trail improvements, there are six trails there that we would touch, there's about 26 sections of trails that we identified as staff, so as you can see, this is going to hit maybe 20% again of those. Duncan Road, Woods Chapel, Adams Dairy, Moreland School, Adams Dairy Parkway again, and Baumgartner. And then lastly, Adams Point Golf Course will receive $300,000 to help repair some of the bunkers that need to be replaced, replace the roof on the clubhouse, which is, currently has leaks going on, and then replacing two holes of the cart path. Yes?
Yes, Dennis, this slide you're on here, the, I can see the golf course improvements up there in black, the $300,000.
Yes.
But then the total estimate is 3.6 million.
That's what, that's what we considered. There's still more than that. That is, the 3.65 million is the total needs at this time that the Park Commission considered while trying to develop the funding proposal.
Specifically for the golf course?
What's that?
Specifically for the golf?
Specifically for the golf course.
Okay.
Yes, sir. There's about a million, just to give you an idea, there's about a million dollars in cart path improvements that need to be made at that facility. We're talking about funding $100,000 here. So Vesper Hall, again, we considered $110,000, there's $75,000 in improvements there. Again, there's significantly more that are needed beyond these. The numbers that you see to the right, as Councilman Fowler was asking, those are just what the Park Commission considered. That's not the full and total needs of our park system as it sits today. So again, it's a quarter cent sales tax, sunsets in five years, requesting to be considered for the April 4, 2017 election. And certainly, as we get ready to allow you to ask questions, the next slide will provide you some additional photos. It's going to run a slideshow of just some of our deferred maintenance needs throughout our park system, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you'd have about this.
Are there any questions?
Your Honor, if I may, or you want to go first?
Well, I can.
Go first.
You know, as I look, as I look at this proposal, and it only funds 20% of overall needs, because, you know, our, our park system has deteriorated over the years because we have not had the funds to put in it to keep it up to the standard that we would like. Five years is probably one of the lowest numbers I've ever seen for a sunset. Most of them are greater than that, probably at least 10 years or greater in some cases. And five years with a quarter percent brings in 7.5 million, whereas maybe if you, with a half cent, that's going to give you a little bit more bang to be able to impress upon the people in five years that here are some real improvements that we've made. And certainly, you would have to bring it back for the people to renew it. Did y'all take into consideration, since we're talking about a five-year sunset, looking at that half cent sales tax? Because if you take a look at this, I think 63% of the communities that we looked at has a half cent rather than a quarter cent, and there's some that have an eighth of a cent.
Yeah, we actually do, and I can actually show you what a half cent would look like. So just give me a second. So what you'll see here is this, as Mayor Ross said, this would significantly change what we'd be able to do and what it would look like. So half cent is going to fund Burris Old Mill at $2.5 million. That's to actually complete everything that would need to be done. So one of the things that the Park Commission really talked about as they developed this, they really wanted to say, how do we really complete two parks, or try to really step up and make two parks have a lot of improvements made to them? And so they tried to choose them basically east and west, simply because we don't have a lot of parks down south that are fully developed and stuff. So they looked at Burris Old Mill, which is more of a family-type setting, a lot of passive recreation opportunities, playgrounds, skate parks, things like that. And then Young Park, which was more of an athletic-type facility with the tennis courts, the softball fields, basketball courts, the disc golf course there. And so $2.5 million would totally renovate Burris Old Mill, would change it dramatically, make improvements basically to every feature in that park. The same with Young Park, $3.5 million would totally repair and replace everything in that park that needs to be. And then that would leave about, just under $6 million for other park improvements, $1.5 million for trails, or $1.25 million for trails, $1.5 million for the golf course, and then $500,000 for Vesper Hall. So as it looks, you can see that Burris Old Mill Park is significantly different. You can see that the list is about 21 different items within that park system. We've also built in contingencies so that in case inflation or changes in cost come into that, we try to build a number that we felt would be longstanding. Wilbur Young, its estimated total is about 3.4 million, we're funding it at 3.5 million, again with that contingency in there, and that would take care of everything in that park as well. Other, our half cent sales tax for other park improvements, you're seeing the list goes significantly farther, it gets us a lot of our parking lots that need to be replaced and repaired. We have most of them that are at failure at this point. All these on the list are on a rating system pretty low in the, in the city's scheme of things. Most of them are at 30% or less on a 100 scale, so.
Very good.
Trails would be improved, you'd hit about, just over about 50 to 60% of our trails would see improvements and renovations to them. And then Adams Point would see a million and a half. You can see here, it's $450,000 for bunker replacement, $800,000 for the cart path, $50,000 for the curb, and then the main drive to be replaced at $88,000 in the parking lots. Vesper Hall would see about a half a million dollars, and the big thing that changes that is that we'd be able to replace the roof. The building's about 20 years old, the roof is a 20-year-old roof and needs to be replaced. So that significantly changes that, and as you said, this would fund about 40% of our deferred maintenance needs, but significantly make a different impact on the community as a whole.
Councilman Carter?
Thank you, sir.
He's the liaison.
Thank you, sir. This is my second go-around as liaison of the Parks Commission, and I have to say Dennis and his staff have done an amazing job, this Parks Commission has done an amazing job, the committee, the staff, I mean, they've all done wonderful work on this. Jack could not be here tonight because he had a medical procedure, but he keeps a log and goes through the parks and jots down everything that's wrong. And I got to tell you, this is not our first go-around with this, and I was here the last time we did it. Councilman Kowell and I did a forum with folks up north, and we were trying to get a community center, and then deferred maintenance over here, maybe a little bit, and there was no sunset. And that was some of the pushback that we got from the residents. First of all, they said, you know, you're talking a lot about this community center, but we got our parks that are just falling apart. Why aren't you doing more about that? Well, and we know that we lost because Jackson County came in at the last minute and ran something against us. This is a much different Parks Department now. I was there last Tuesday night for the monthly meeting that we have. We have it at the Field House, and I had to drive around twice to find a parking place. I mean, it's vibrant. You know, there are young people there, I mean, it's really a jewel of our park system. But unfortunately, our parks are still falling apart. We've got to do something about this. And, you know, my advice to this committee was to go for the quarter cent, because let's at least do something, let's get something on the books. But the more I've sat with this and pondered it, I agree, half cent's the way to go. And I know that there's perhaps some pushback about not putting it on the April ballot because we have a couple of contested council races. I completely disagree with that. If I were running for reelection, I would feel that way, because if we wait, God knows what's going to happen. Will the county come in with something else? Will the fire district? Will the school district? I mean, this is something we need to do now. Dennis, you were telling me that the deferred maintenance cost from the last time to this time, what's the difference?
We were at about $15 million last time, we're somewhere between $30 and $35 million right now.
Yeah, and parks continues to go to the back of the CIP, and there are other needs in the city, and we all get that. And you see from the chart that we're one of the very few without a dedicated funding source. So I would propose that we go in April, that we go at a half cent, and then we put a five-year sunset on it, and as we're doing these things, let's put big signage on it and say, this is what we're doing, this is what Blue Springs is. Because this is a quality of life issue. When people decide to move to a town, I know I did it 22 years ago, the first thing you look at is the schools. We have a great school district. Well, guess what? So does Lee's Summit, and they're going circles around us in parks. This is something we can fix. One of the things that was disturbing that came out of the last meeting, you were telling me that you closed the tennis courts at Blue Springs Park. Well, as horrible a tennis player as I am, that's the first place I played tennis, and that breaks my heart, that we can't let people in there because it's dangerous right now. This is just, it's self-evident, and I think we need to move forward, and I would be willing to propose that if it's appropriate.
I would imagine the process and ordinance would have to be drawn up, Mr. McDonald, and probably the earliest we could do it, our next meeting is January 17. And I think we would have to be able to get it in by then to certify it, to get it on the April ballot. I think there are some timelines there. Who can help me?
That's me, absolutely. So we would, Your Honor, if that's the desire of the council tonight, and I'm certain there are others who want to weigh in and talk about this issue, but we would, we would bring an ordinance back to you at the January 17 meeting, and then it has to be certified with the Jackson County Election Board no later than January 24.
Okay.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Kowell.
I wanted to echo what Dale said. I also want to mention that the, when staff did the area plan meetings, we had a lot of feedback in those meetings that we needed to do something in this area as well. I want to agree with you, Dale, on what you said about, you know, sometimes elected officials, when they have contested elections, are hesitant to do these things. This is the right thing to do for our city. I'm 100% behind it. I agree with the half cent approach. We've, you know, when I came in in 2005, I was told we have always balanced the back, balanced our city budget on the back of our streets. And then about a year or two later, we moved all of that money to the streets, which we desperately needed at that time. And since that time, our parks have suffered. And I think our residents understand that. And all I'm hearing when it comes to parks is we need to do something because they're falling apart. So I support this, I support what Dale said, and I think we need to move forward with it, and April is just a perfect time to do it.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Then we come to Councilman Fowler.
Dennis, I just wanted to ask, you mentioned the selection of the parks, Old Mill and Wilbur Young specifically, more in context geography, was any consideration given to the usage of parks, you know, where most residents go? Are these pretty heavily used parks over some of the others in the system?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think as we looked at things, we were trying to figure out parks that gave easy access, that could give great exposure, and that our residents could get to easily, because we certainly can't fix parks in the north, south, east, and west. It's just not physically possible with the finances we had available. So it was trying to look at those parks that maybe had an impact, so like I said, there was a passive recreation activity where more families came and were to hang out, to do kind of those kinds of activities. And then, again, one of those more active parks. And certainly, Hidden Valley's a very active park, but there's a lot of stuff that we're able to do down there still today. Our associations work very well with us, and we try to help them in making improvements to their fields, they assist in some of those costs. So we've been able to somewhat mitigate some of the needs down there, but certainly there are needs down there. But really, when it came down to it, it really was looking, we couldn't really do north and south very easily, because like I said, there's just not a lot of big parks down in our southern part, and so it really made sense to go east and west, and it gave easy access north and south for those residents to be able to get to those.
Okay. So you feel like, and also have a pretty great impact?
Yes.
As far as the usage of that money?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the things that we're proposing, it's hitting a lot of different things. Like I said, it's adding a splash pad, which is a big thing that we continue to hear within our community about meeting our aquatics needs. So by being able to make some of those changes to Old Mill and really changing the way that park is maybe even used a little bit, and then really improving the sports side of things, that active side. If you've ever been to Young Park on a Friday, Saturday night, that park is packed. If you've ever been to Young Park on a Friday, Saturday night, that park is packed at all times. Kids are on the volleyball courts, basketball courts, tennis courts are getting used, we have softball going on, so it's a very heavily-used park. And then, of course, a lot of people use the disc golf course during the daylight.
Well, just to speak to the overall context then of the sales tax, I guess, obviously, the last go-round of this, I was one of the councilmen that opposed it. And mostly it was for the reasons that you've talked about. A large portion of that sales tax was going to fund a $30 million community center that we have found a way to do within the realms of city budget and meet that need without charging a no sunset tax to the residents. The maintenance was what I was talking about at the time, was really the biggest need. And so I'm glad to see that we are, you know, kind of focusing in on what the greatest need for the Parks Department is. I think that being the case, in the citizen survey, our Parks Department still ranked very high, even in their current condition, the residents still enjoy and appreciate and use our parks at a very high rate, and still rate them amongst the highest services that the city provides. So in context of the half cent versus four cent, I guess my only caution to my district one councilman would be is just the electability of it. If we go for a half cent and it gets turned down again, then we're still putting ourselves behind the eight ball to go for something else in the near future. So maybe it's better to wade ourselves into the water a little bit, start having that impact, start putting up those signs that we're making changes, and show the benefits it's having to revenue and those sorts of things. I would just be cautious that if we go for the half cents and put ourselves in a position where we get nothing out of the election, and then we're behind the eight ball to try again in however many years it takes.
Councilman Fowler?
No, Your Honor. No comment?
Any comments? Can I bring up one other thing?
Go ahead.
One of the things I don't think you mentioned in the presentation was that even though you were doing a lot of work at the two parks, you're doing something in every park.
Yes. Yeah, that is true. I mean, those other park improvements were spread amongst all the parks, north, south, east, and west. So there's something in every district and every, pretty much tried to get every geographical location within Blue Springs that had a park. There's going to be some improvement. Those improvements, some of those improvements may be blacktop, but certainly those are improvements that need to be made at this point in time.
So to piggyback on that, if every park's getting it, what was going in at Roscoe Rider Park?
Nothing, because.
I'm developing. Sorry. I'm developing.
But you know, one other thing, Chris, I mean, I was exactly where you were. I'm like, let's get something going here at a quarter cent. But the more I've sat with this and looked at the list of what we can do at a quarter cent and what we can do at a half cent, and knowing how close we were in that election, and knowing what the other factors were, I think the bigger factors were no sunset, the community center, and translational medicine from Jackson County, which brought out the no-no voters. I think, if I'm not mistaken on this, we got more yes votes for the Parks Tax than we did for the police tax.
We did.
Okay. So having, you know, had the thing in my hands for a little over a week now, I'm confident if we spread the message that we can get a half cent. And we need it. We really need to get going on this.
I think we all agree the need is there. Maybe we can write the ordinance to be like we vote no for yes, like we did that last one. It's possible to.
That was our legislature.
Yeah, I know. That's the state legislature.
To my colleagues on the council, the other thing to take into consideration is on the pure fact that the first meeting of January has been canceled, it gives us a fairly significant amount of time to reach out to our constituents and find out what it is they really are looking for from us. A lot of times, we vote on things where we don't have that opportunity, but a full month is a good amount of time to be able to put out questions, listen to what people have to say, and figure out what the best thing is so that on the 17th, we can make a decision that is well-informed.
Any other comments before I go to Councilman Carter again?
Yes, Your Honor. I know we don't have a large park down the south part of town, but I do know that as I've traversed about, particularly in the last six months, all the communities I've been in have wonderful park systems. Splash pads are the big thing. They're well-used and they're extremely popular. They bring a lot of family activity. I truly believe and would support going for a half cent. I don't think that the difference between the half cent and the quarter cent are going to make that much difference in your yes or no votes. They're either going to support it, or they're not going to support it. And I think that we need to, we need to make those improvements to our parks. There's an awful lot of people, particularly on the south side, I don't know about the rest of the community from the north end, who go over to Lee's Summit to use their facilities. And I'd certainly like to put a stop to that if I can.
Did you need something, Councilman Edmondson?
Everybody else has chimed in. I thought it was my turn.
Yes, it is your turn.
And Susan, you brought up a really good point, and one I would like to make on that is that if we don't solve our maintenance problems, we never will be able to develop the parks we have down in the south. And we've got some nice land down there that we can do something with. But if you can't keep up on what we have, how can you develop what's out there? And that really, the south part of our town is probably the biggest area we're going to develop in the coming years of this community. And if you develop all that up, and then you have these vacant chunks of land sitting there that labeled as a park, it really doesn't lend itself to bringing maybe some of those young families in where they would like to have a park close to them. So sometimes I think we really need to try to step up and say, okay, let's get this done so we can build for the future of Blue Springs. Because we are a city on the move, Your Honor.
And on the right track.
And our community surveys have always shown that people want the amenities. They want the school systems, they want the amenities. Those are our top two. And I know the young people that I deal with through my son and his constituents, that's what they look at, quality of life.
Anybody else before I go to Councilman Carter? Councilman Carter is about to make a motion that this is brought forward on the January 17th agenda for approval.
So moved.
But on the ballot.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second?
At a half cent. Five-year sunset.
Yes, that's what, that's exactly what I was going to say.
Yes. Is there a second?
I second it.
There's a second. And any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. It will be brought forward on the 17th. All right. That brings us to Merrill announcements. Again, I will continue to preach about crime, and it just bothers me to no end every time I hear it. Another child was shot, this time in my home state of Arkansas, in Little Rock, Arkansas, a one-year-old and a three-year-old in a vehicle with their grandmother. And I guess she wasn't driving fast enough, and a guy honked his horn at her, and she just honked her horn back. And he gets out with a gun when she got to the stop sign and shot in the car and killed a three-year-old boy. And took off. Coward. Hopefully, they are getting. It's got to quit, it's got to stop. So we'll continue to preach that as long as it happens, we'll preach it. Certainly, within the next few days, it's going to be Christmas. And so we wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, and we're looking forward to an exciting prosperous 2017. But as I come down to Thoughts of the Pundah, I'm going to do two of them tonight, and they're both kind of interrelated. One is from Winston Churchill, and I quote, "Christmas is a season not only of rejoicing, but of reflection." The next one comes from David Cameron, and it says, "Christmas gives us the opportunity to pause and reflect on the important things around us, a time when we can look back on the year that has passed and prepare for the year ahead," end quote. So although they, they're different, they are related in looking back, reflecting, rejoicing, and looking forward. Don't have any visitors' appearance forms, so I am going to defer to our returning city attorney that is serving on an interim basis while we find a replacement for a city attorney. And this will be his first opportunity to read a motion, so Councilman Carter can so move. May I, thank you. I move that the council go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021, Subparagraph